Welcome Eric. And welcome Tiva. Good stuff.
Got to tell you, this day has been a lot of talking and no action.
Not completely no action, we did set up the D Work initially.
I guess.
But it's still...
I'm longing for deep work. To do powers of something very focused.
What is it?
What kind of work are you looking for, Tiva?
Well, for now, the need to do tasks are basically project closing reports and writing nice stories and reasons why I'm doing something. But most of what I like to do is ideate, organize, mainly organize, and improve some processes and like moving stuff around on visualizations.
Alright, maybe we may have something for you, a little bit parallel to the Ambassador program. Maybe there are some other things we will start outsourcing soon. You know what I'm talking about, Peter? But it's a little bit too early to make it very concrete. So there are some decisions we need to make internally on that. But it's well possible that we will get into a trajectory where there's ever more and more work going to be outsourced to the community.
Yeah.
And something related to project management is definitely something that might be interesting there. But I'm keeping the tension up a little bit for now.
Yeah, but sure.
That's so easy. When you say something, but actually you don't. Just here. No, you have a reason to come back next week, right?
Oh, you do that too, Felix.
I don't hope so. Alright, it's already seven minutes past. Let's get started. Let me share the screen.
Yeah, on the topic, I think what I'm looking forward from what we know is the from Ambassador Program, Peter's idea of making that like Singularity Net as a high-level view how things are related and that view. And my expectation is that people from the community know what to kind of put up on the Myro boards or where they organize. And then I will have like a nice like a weekend or something where I just look into what is written there and bring up some like key words or the way I would categorize them. And if I go into different like links what has provided, then I will start like finding a map of like what are related then. And then drawing my concepts and just share it out to people and see what they see from here. This is one of the deep works I like to do, just guessing what that's like.
Bring structure to complex things. And then also in a visual way. Okay, that sounds cool. It's at least very important to know these kind of things so that when something comes up, that if now something like that would come up next week, then you're top of mind, of course. So if we know that from everybody what their preferences are, that would be very helpful. But I'm only a guest here, so don't let me hijack this meeting.
No, we're all equals here. That's all good.
Wow.
Let's see. We've got Julian joining as well and welcome. And lazy learner, also welcome. Let me give you a quick overview of the agenda. I wanted to do a short recap of the last meeting and the feedback. And then a small update on the workgroup progress. There's right now at least two workgroups. One for structuring the Ambassador Program and one for making a community podcast happening. So I want to yeah, give a little bit there. And after that, to expand a bit on the tasks and rewards and what's happening there. Any additions to the agenda by any chance?
Sure Architect has something to add. Should I?
Don't be shy. Come on.
No, I don't have any hot stuff. We'll see, maybe later. I don't know.
Let me find the last meeting.
Julian Collins shared some information related to podcast stuff on the Discord. So maybe from him, something to add like who, feedback from which deep funding winners he got? Or did anybody reply or what?
I would say if it's related to the podcast, you can do that during the yeah, small update on that. Perhaps? Or is it separate from that? It's very softly, but maybe that's on my side.
Yeah, no, you can.
I think it's me. I think it's me. So yes, I do have, I haven't been actually contacted back, but I did get in touch with a couple of the deep funding winners I tried, attempted to. So let's see, I got in touch with Museverse through Twitter. I attempted to get in touch with them. I wanted to interview them. I like that service. It seems I'm quite interested in the Metaverse and VR. And I'm a musician myself, so that obviously was kind of a no-brainer for me. I have not been contacted back from them either. There is one other, one other deep funding winner. I decided, you know, a couple at first would probably be enough for the first episode. Depending on whether or not they actually get back to me. But the other was Henrik or Kenrick Nelson. I messaged them through Telegram about the risk aware assessments of AI algorithms. That one was quite interesting to me as well. Haven't heard back from them either. You know, the Kenrick was about four or five days ago. And the Museverse people, I believe, was just yesterday morning for me. So that's less time for them to get back, so I don't know. I attempted to look up, I think his name is Patrick Gutev through Telegram as well, but I wasn't able to find them on Telegram. So that's why I reached out to them through Twitter. You know, because that was, I just found Museverse on Twitter. So yeah, that was a couple of the people that I thought would be nice as far as I'm concerned. Maybe have a short interview with them. See, you know, I have a few questions that I had put together for them as potential questions. I have, you know, I had put together a potential mission statement for the podcast itself. You know, I, it's obviously just ideas here. But I don't know how much we want to go over now, Peter. I do want to apologize, guys, because I did actually get up really early this morning and I took a nap and apparently slept through all my alarms for the podcast meeting, which is very embarrassing, but I do have to own up to that's what happened. So I'm so sorry, everybody, for not attending that. I have been doing a lot of research and note-taking for this. I've just been busy with work and it's on a kind of a weird schedule with you guys because I'm over in Eastern Standard Time. So I literally just woke up and ran over here. So I have a lot more stuff about the podcast, but I don't know how much you want to go over right now.
Yeah, I did intend to have a little update on that a bit later.
Yeah, that's good.
Regarding the podcast and the awarded teams for deep funding, I can perhaps help you a little bit because I have a kickoff meeting with the teams on Thursday. So I could ask them if they're interested in joining the podcast. I do have to say you have a little bit of competition because I also want to organize a kind of town hall with them where they will present their thing. But maybe I can frame it in a way that the podcast might have a little bit more time for them. So in the town hall, it will be like five minutes max or something. And I imagine that in the podcast, you can go a little bit deeper with them to their history or their personal things or whatever you want to talk about.
Sure, sure.
So I can ask them if they're interested. I can ask them if they, if it's okay if I share their emails with you. And otherwise, I can ask them if they are, if they are willing to contact you guys. And in that case, whom should I be forwarding them to?
Did you guys get a lot done today with the Miro workspace stuff? I mean, is that somewhere where you think it would go for everybody? I mean, I'm happy to do it too, to get in touch with them, but I want it to be available to everybody if they want it.
I feel like Architect and Julian are both very good people to contact. But I would want to hear from Architect too, what he thinks.
I think Julian should have the direct contact because he's the guy that gonna take it further.
And can I give them an email address to reach out to or should they reach out on social media?
No, you can have them reach out to me specifically. The email is just my first and last name and then collaborations. That's the one we can use, I guess. It's, um, let me see here. Should I put it in the general Ambassador event? I mean, I'm not super knowledgeable about Discord. I know I could just go over to the general tab, I guess, for the Ambassador Program or maybe into the community podcasts chat and just write it in there.
That's your wish.
Whatever, whatever, work.
I'm sure, Peter, you can get me the email address.
Yeah, I can direct message Peter as well.
Okay.
Well, you can direct message Yon as well in that case, but sure.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'm open to either of that.
The red bar is in the yellow at the admins. Or just through the call, I guess. It's all good. You can also do that.
Yeah, I see here. Yep, I got it. But yeah, I mean, I thought, I was thinking about different segments for the podcast. Just certain ideas about how, because we want to obviously interview these people for a bit and have them talk about their projects and illuminate that. But as we were talking last week, maybe we want to have more than just that and, you know, within a certain episode. So I was kind of brainstorming about that. And I can add that into the Miro itself or we can talk later about that, guys, about adding that in for everybody to have access to.
Yeah, let's just keep in touch about these names. It also doesn't have to be in the next two weeks, right? It can also be in a month or two months or have one awarded every week or whatever.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, is that just depending on what their schedules are looking like, they may not, you know, have the time right now. And so I was thinking potentially we could even, you know, message some more just to, you know, depending on whether or not these other people don't have the time right now. But if you can actually get in touch with them, Yon, and see if you're gonna do it that way, maybe we wait and just see, hey, are either of them ready? And then we can move on from there.
Yeah, I will. I will. And yeah, probably they will be most motivated to be on the podcast when their service is close to being published. But maybe also now when the win is still fresh. But like I said, you have some competition with the town hall. I also think that a number of them are quite technical people. So I'm not sure how comfortable they are being behind a camera or a microphone. I'm not sure how you plan to do the podcast.
Yeah, that actually reminds me also because I have a lot of passion for Singularity Net and all the projects. And I do do a bit of my own kind of personal research, but I'm in no way a technical person when it comes to, you know, artificial intelligence coding, that kind of thing. So I did have the idea that perhaps we would want to have somebody on the podcast or at least touching in. I know we were talking about crypto AI news, touching in from time to time about stuff, but perhaps even having someone more involved that has a more technical, you know, side to it all and can kind of speak to everything from a more technical side that we could kind of bounce back and forth. I, there's like a VR podcast that I watch from time to time and that's kind of the, you know, the format there. And I just thought that was nice. I just don't want to leave anything to be desired as far as not being able to, you know, speak to it as much from the technical side. So that was something I was thinking about. But yeah, I imagine they may be a little bit nervous potentially to go. I mean, I'm open to just doing audio. We prefer doing video and audio at the same time. Just to have that for people who wanted, you know, to have video. I think it could be nice, but it's gonna depend on, you know, what, what they actually want to do or can do, you know.
Yeah, well, you will have plenty of time to sort that out. I wouldn't be too nervous about not being technical. Actually, risk when you have somebody really technical talking to somebody else who is really technical, you know what's going to happen.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's sometimes harder to play the stupid host and just ask all those questions that other people don't dare to ask. And then that will be your job. Well, this is all too technical for me. I don't, I don't understand a word what you're saying. Can you explain it in layman terms for me? That will make a difference, I think.
Yeah, I thought that could be nice because that's kind of the aspect of the community that I represent, which I can't be alone in that of just someone who's not super technical but has a lot of passion for it and is willing to, you know, watch the videos and, you know, look into this stuff. But yeah, I think that that is an audience that I could potentially help serve just because that's who I am. So, but there's obviously multiple facets to the community.
We can take one potential here to do it early is that it also gives like the practice to the people. So once it does launch and they do want outreach and then when they go front of camera, they already have some experience. And maybe it would be, they would be interested to return and have like a session episode, a second episode.
Yeah, that's what I was also thinking, that might be nice too. If we're gonna interview them, maybe we could say, hey, let's touch base in a few months or maybe six months, or maybe we could do it a couple of times where we touch base, where I was gonna ask them, you know, where do you see things going in the near future? You know, further along, and we could touch base with them again. So it could be something where we could see how things are going down the line. And yeah, of course, it would hopefully get a little bit more comfortable as we went along with more interviews.
Yeah, I think it would be great if these awarded teams would have enough exposure to the community so that they really become embedded in the community and it's not just giving a paycheck and say, good luck. You guys can help with that. That would be great. I think that would be ultimately, that would be better than if me or somebody else from the organization would take care of that. So personally, I'm very open to that. And the more, the better from my, from my point of view. But yeah, let's see how that, how that podcast will kick off and how you get organized there.
Yeah, the deep for this meeting, but in a way, sorry to interrupt. It's a bit of a, right now, I think, the initial plan for the podcast is to get started with deep funding candidates. So yeah, we'll have to see how they respond and what the timeline exactly will look like. Sorry, Architect.
No, that's okay. No. I just want to say to Julian, please have your thoughts or content that you had in mind elaborating with at your home table. Please put it on Miro and we can maybe collaborate and add and see if something.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Okay, and then that is, I can access all that through the community podcast tab. You guys have a link there for me to just go in there and add from today. Okay, awesome.
It might be buried a little bit by now, but...
No, I'm sure I can find it. I'm not completely in app with this stuff. I just, I'm not, I haven't been using it for years and years and years. But I'm not, I'm probably middle ground when it comes to using Discord.
Alright.
Okay. Looks like I see it here from like 12 of two podcast ideation and sources. Miro boarded for podcast brainstorming. Yeah, I think I got it.
Well, might as well continue a bit more about the podcast since we're here anyway. Architect, is there anything you want to share about the progress of the the podcast workgroup for the past week?
No, I think we touched quite the big points, which was Julian's work on it and the Miro, Muro board work that we have, well, had a couple hours ago and then which we elaborate on. So no, not much more than that. If no one else has something to add.
From project management point of view, yeah, I see like the overlap that Ambassador and podcasting looks to use same tooling. So we now have different spectrum of tasks and we'll see the learnings of from each of the groups and how, how these tools serve them.
Yeah, that's a big point actually that we're trying to learn from each other and to kind of have a common tool set is well, kind of goal, I would say. But we have to evolve in our own group and see where we can overlap and improve. So that's, that's good.
Alright, let's see. Yeah, I wanted to do a small recap on last week's meeting and progress made on that. Things shifted a little. There was, last week I was happy to show around a little bit stuff, like some updates made to the Notion page. But actually during last week's podcast meeting on Friday, we discussed a little bit about the tooling and what kind of stack to use. Notion was not in that stack, so very likely we will not be using Notion at all, I think, pretty much. Will be combination of Gitbook for the documentation side and then D Work for the task side of things, the Trello board basically. And that's supported by Discord. Some of you may have seen during the afternoon a little bit, yeah, some messages from D Work popping up into the Ambassador chat channel. Basically, it needs to be more set up than it is right now. But yeah, basically, once, once tasks get added to that Trello board, then there will be pop-ups in the Ambassador chat where if people are looking around, they can, they can claim the task, they have to work on it. That's the broad outline. So yeah, that, that progress on Notion from last week is out of the window, pretty much. Let's see.
Ustian, Peter, D Work project, have you established one? I was elaborating with, well, more internally. So is it something you have established or created a D Work project for podcast?
No, not so much for the podcast, more for the, let me show you actually. For the Ambassador Program itself, so a bit broader. I do know you, I think this is the podcast one, yeah.
Okay, so the question is maybe should we use that one or should we have?
Well, it can be combined. Like the way it works is that it merges. So if you have tasks in one project and then on another project, you have tasks as well. You can simply see it in your, where's that? My task board? That combines it from, like, as you can see, it indicates, does this show properly? Yeah. It indicates which project it's coming from. So yeah, it can be multiple projects on D Work. That's not in each other's way in any way.
Okay, okay. The question was really if you should create a D Work project and act as a kind of administrator or like owner of the project. But I mean, that's work.
Yeah.
Situations. I don't know which privileges, kind of, what's the difference will be, but...
Well, the cool thing here is that as an ambassador, you, as you connect it with that program, everybody has that ability to be project manager. So it's like more a T-centered way to manage projects and tasks. And also now, as we created this, I think we have the Discord server for the for the podcast group too. And as there is also the D Work initiated, you, we basically have all the access to create the boards and to tasks and move them around. And speaking of that same thing and adding to the, like, the topic what you asked, like how the process would look like. And I discussed today with Peter and in the previous room, Cardano was there and somebody else. And there was like, when we create these tasks, we try to like analyze like, why is it this task? Like, what does it solve that task? And how does it, how is it important to the mission of Singularity Net? And then also like what problem you even see? Like, yes, there is a task to translate it, but why we translating it? but why we translating it? And then Peter was able to quite quickly answer. So I felt like these questions maybe are they add a bit of like difficulty to create a task, but it creates a lot of valuable context. Which then also allows this task to be moved on the board. And, and these like experiments and analytics were, were taken from, uh, Cardano Project Catalyst circle, like experiments. And so far it trained like it goes to it and, and maybe like in few weeks, when we create these tasks and there was also Peter created a new task about creating that template. So I know we could adopt that, try it out and in two weeks, perhaps the tasks themselves, we define them by answering those questions. And then everybody else can be a project manager by raising thoughtful, uh, issues.
Yeah, it would basically be open to anybody to create tasks.
Okay, great, thanks.
Um. Yeah, as I mentioned, uh, we did have a session for setting it up, um. But yeah, then we dove a bit deep into certain issues and then before you note, time is over and, uh, yeah. Uh, so that will need more, um, workshop sessions for, for setup. Um, yeah, same as always, if, if there's anybody interested in, uh, in joining that, uh, do reach out, do let me know. I think we did not properly schedule the next one, um. No, we did not. Um, might as well go ahead and do that, um. Would Thursday 14 UTC work? Just throwing out, uh, a time slot. And it's, I guess, primarily aimed at Tivo and Grandano, of which I know they're interested, but anybody else, uh, interested is also free to, uh, charm in.
Yeah, Thursday works for me.
Sorry, I have to omit Thursday. But it's more people around.
Yep, okay, I, Thursday works for me and I hope to actually create the templates too. So we can use that session to review the the process.
Awesome. Uh, yeah, so Thursday 14 UTC, um, if anybody also watching this later, uh, does want to join in on that, just reach out. Uh, let's see, yeah, I did met some, uh, improvements to the signup form, uh, does need a bit further, um. Like, I, I, I was thinking completely redoing it, but then I figured, well, there's this interest form is already out there and it's, it's not that bad. I can probably just improve it and then it becomes actually functional. Uh, so I had a little go on that, um. For example, it, it didn't specify which creative tasks, uh, somebody would be interested in doing. So if somebody is, uh, wanted to write or make a video or help on the podcast, uh, this was all the same box. So that's like, yeah. It gives some information, but hardly any at the same time. Uh, the only thing I want to add now is, um, like a, a bit of the skill set, um. Yeah, place to enter your, your, your skills, which you have and which you're looking to contribute. And yeah, I think that's it on the signup form, uh, community podcast. I think we covered enough. Um, then let's see the infographic, um. Last week we discussed this as a yeah, it's like a, like a challenge and there was some discussion, um, whether to do this as a group project or as to have separate people make separate versions and um, when was it? Not entirely sure when it was, uh, at some point, um. I think after yesterday's meeting, um. Tivo, you made a, a form for, um, yeah, asking some questions on what people are looking for in this infographic. I will try to find the link and put that in the sheet actually and also in the in the meeting notes.
Uh, okay, I will look for it.
Then we'll be looking.
Okay, found on the ambassador program channel and I read on the my world.
Awesome. Thank you, um. Yeah, outside of the meeting, I, I did not get input on this, uh, task challenge, uh, concept, so maybe that tells something about the quality of the challenge. Then onto the updates on tasks, uh, let's see, we're 20 minutes to go now. Um, yeah, translations are coming in, a bit slow, but, uh, but they are coming in. Um, there's a new, um, blog post which, um, is up for translation. Uh, I will make these tasks in, uh, in Dwork and you will see them pop up in the chat once they are there. And I think yeah, should be either this night or tomorrow, uh, there's a, a May community update blog incoming. And that also will be, uh, up for translation. So there's a bit more translation tasks coming. Um, I did figure out, um, at least for short term, uh, way to deal with the translated content and I think we'll simply put it on the SingularityNet forum and then at the Medium page, um, of the original blog post, we can simply link like, um, oh, this is also available in whatever translations are available. So I was trying to juggle with Medium and, and having like some setup where you can within Medium select, um, how to say, which, which languages you want to read. Uh, but you can't really change anything, uh, not much in, uh, in Medium, so that, yeah, I think it's more practical to simply, now that people are providing these translations, to have them available for for readers. So, yeah, then I forget, let's, let's go for the forum. Then on the reduced beta review, there's one applicant so far, um, there were slots for three. And let me check if I heard back. Uh, Grandano, from the top of mind that, uh, you were interested in doing that, right?
Yeah, definitely. Is there anybody I need to reach out to about that?
No, I'm doing that and, uh, it's slow, uh, but yeah, I hope to have that figured out and then finalize tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
Uh, let's see, so yeah, there's, there's still two open spots there if anybody's interested. And, um, let's see, the open call for blog posts, uh, that did get, um, during the discussion was mentioned like, well, this should be, uh, narrowed down a bit, uh, because of the scope of, uh, yeah, it's just very open call and yeah, did not properly do that, to be honest, um, this, this narrowing down into yeah, more directed, uh, topic. Uh, there were some suggestions to, to have it be about the ambassador program itself and might like the suggestion. At the same time, uh, nobody followed up on that suggestion. So I think for now that remains an open, uh, open item. Hi, yep, and, uh, a couple of new ideas which I figured, let's hear what people think about it. Whether it's, uh, worth putting some, some tokens next to that or even yeah, if it's worth ideating further on. Um, first one would be in, uh, I think it would be great to have an, an open pool for people interested in, in graphics slash creative work, um. Sometimes in, uh, internally in, in SingularityNet, there is an acute need for, for something, but there's yeah, it's a struggle with resources or we need to shuffle around stuff. And so I, I figured it would be good to have, um, like an open pool, so we can just target directly ask people who we know are interested, um, in doing this kind of work. Yeah, to, to get them to help out, um, so yeah, right now it's a bit hard to put, um, actual reward next to that, so I didn't. And I guess graphics slash creative is, is pretty broad, uh, would include, uh, video, could include audio if the task asks for it. Um, next one is something I did mention earlier, I think, last week, um. Like if we at some point want ambassadors to be able to host live events, we need some, some kind of information pack to give them and yeah, we're still looking for, for people who, uh, would like to help out on that or perhaps people who have a lot of experience on, on live events and, uh, know what they should definitely, um, not skip in these promo packs.
Yeah, I can definitely help. I reached out to the Cardano ambassadors in Slack and asked some meetup organizers, we have some pretty great experience already. Just if they could spare some time, introduce some introduction education, but not to, to the folks here. And they are really motivated, so. Yep.
Awesome. Alright, um, uh, yeah, based on the, um, the, the Catalyst Swarm meeting on, uh, on deep funding and SingularityNet. I figured it would be interesting to, uh, perhaps, uh, put out a task for somebody to write a one pager on it. Just like a summary on, on what kind of thinking happened there, what, what, what got covered, um. Cause, um, not gonna lie, I did not find the time so far yet to listen back to it. I'm fully booked during the day and then, yeah, the last hour of the day I get to do something on my own and yeah, I find myself so far not having listened to it. So that made me think, like, yeah, perhaps we can, if we could get a one pager going, then this, this content can be more accessible just because it's less time invested.
So maybe definitely worth also to think about the general process. If we have, let's say, community events in Project Catalyst and we speak about things in Singularity and Deep Fun to say, oh, okay, cause the situation will repeat. And which process do we want to have on back to easily stream everything, all the information there and to you guys? And vice versa, I think would be really cool as well. Like for example, something like this for the actual town halls here as well, right? Where we can easily stream between the communities, hey, what is going on there? Trying to keep everybody more or less up to date. Cause it's kind of difficult mostly to catch up with conversations, mostly it takes too much time. So people prefer mostly to just be part of the conversation. Which very often then brings you, yeah, very often you have to discuss topic twice and whatnot and everything.
Yeah, well, it was also, was really good to see, um, from the Catalyst Swarm site to see these, uh, bounties popping up for timestamping, uh, the, the town hall from, uh, I think the two weeks ago by now, yeah. That made me think like, yeah, well, actually that would have been a cool task to, to have for ourselves to, to have this timestamping going on. Um, but I also really, yeah, I really appreciate like this cross, uh, pollination or like collaboration. Yeah, it's cool stuff. Um, this one can be a bit more concrete, I guess, cause right now there's no, well, there's no token amounts anywhere, but, um, trying to put it a bit into perspective with other bounties we put out. Yeah, I think it would be like yeah, perhaps something like 750-ish.
What, the timestamps or the wrap-up, you say?
Well, for this, this one pager. It's just a number I'm making up at, at the spot, so.
Yeah. It makes me think like, everything documented, uh, related feels like it's, it's where to be tracked, because even when we come out of here, this session, we were I do take notes, but I don't, uh, take them to Dwork, because there was some action items we talked about, there were some meetings, people were like suggesting, yes, we, we like Cardano ambassadors down to meet, which is actually a task to be created. And having somebody like, I don't know, how, how would you create a test, like it would it be a, like a long-term task or every single meeting, even this, like you're sit here to capture actions. Uh, but after this meeting is over, your next step is to distribute them in the Dwork or like in documentation as as expected. And that would allow third, like far, because right now with what we do here is we, we go to the working groups and then we do the work. Or we single-handedly ourselves doing it. But if we had somebody who does that for us, it's, and that it creates more complexity, but I think it would also build on what we do in a higher impact.
So you're saying we need a taskmaster?
Kinda.
Yeah, I don't mind doing that, um. At the same time, if there's anybody around, uh, who feels like, yeah, that's something I, I would really enjoy doing. Feel free to, uh, to speak up.
I do enjoy doing it, but I know that also takes time and unfortunately I don't have it.
Same here.
Same here.
Sorry, were you talking about like taking minutes or what were you guys saying?
Well, not so much, um. Basically, um, when some actions, um, got, got decided on and they need to be turned into a task in, uh, Dwork. Well, that part of, of putting like the, yeah, managing the tasks in, in Dwork.
Not especially managing the tasks, but you said it right. Putting the tasks there, what happens, the rest is just the community to decide or the working group when, when he, next time joins a meeting, it's like, or just had a meeting, oh, but it's all here. Nice that we, we can review and we don't actually have to spend the first 50 minutes and 30 minutes to, to do the work or prepare your work. So I, I, I feel like or prepare your work, so I feel like Peter is doing the great job, but he also needs to start multiplying and share in his knowledge and time to stay on the edge.
Well, yeah, I mean I'm perfectly happy doing that. Yeah, at the same time, for now or later on, or if anybody's watching this back. Once again, feel free to reach out and yeah, it's a job that does need somebody to work on it. Alright, clock is telling me six more minutes, which is not that much. Yeah, another, that's really a stupid random idea in a way, but I figured perhaps having some kind of metaverse presence could be cool. But then again, this is kind of me thinking out ideas where potentially somebody with a very small percentage of chance actually feels passionate about and steps up and takes the initiative, so yeah, it's just an idea.
Oh, I guess I'm late.
I was thinking about a metaverse type of a presence and maybe some type of newscasting or updates for AI ecosystem developments in the metaverse, because there's a huge, you know, demographic there that's tech-related, but I guess we'd need some type of a structure, something. What would be the expectations, etc.?
That's as open as it can be, to be honest, the expectations regarding the specific two words I put there, because yeah, I don't know, I saw some something like, yeah, well, right now we don't have any metaverse presence as SingularityNet, not so much. I mean, Sophia is making dents here and there and yeah, I figured it could be something worth pursuing.
Yeah, that's definitely something I'm interested in a lot myself, so. Pretty heavily follow the VR space and some of the bigger YouTubers in there and I'm very passionate about VR and the future of all that too, so that's definitely something I'm interested in.
Hey, I apologize for being late, I somehow got the time wrong, but Peter E., are you with Singularity.net or Cardano?
I work for SingularityNet.
Oh, okay, by the way, is Sophia still using ChatScript?
I don't know, I think I'm not sure what exact engine she's using currently.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, fair, fair.
Oh, I guess I should have mentioned, my name is Robert Oshler. In Discord, I'm GPT for me, but my name's Robert Oshler and hello Felix and everybody.
Yo.
Yeah, so I'm gonna check out what type of easy fixes there are to maybe play you know, SingularityNet-related videos in some type of a metaverse setting. But I'll explore that and maybe get back to it.
Yeah, can be cool, like some billboards. And I guess the same goes for you, Julian, if you have some more concrete ideas than just metaverse presence, then yeah, it was just an idea from my side. If you can find some twists, yeah, it's very welcome.
Okay, yeah, I'll write that one too, what I can think about. I do have like somewhat of a direct connection to one of the bigger VR people and YouTube and I was thinking about that actually in regards to the Museverse people of potentially at some point maybe connecting them over, you know. And I don't know how that would play into this right off the bat, we probably would want a game plan, actually what we want to do, but at some point if there is some sort of exciting thing that, you know, we want to do with SingularityNet or you know, the Ambassador Program or anything of that nature, it is possible that I have, you know, a couple people I can one in particular that's, they do this big they do this podcast together and some of the bigger, it's like four of the bigger, yeah, VR, you know, Twitch and YouTube people and I you know, one of them I've talked to from time to time and that may be, you know, useful for us at some point just to be able to say, hey, we're doing this exciting stuff and maybe they'll take interest and they can share it and that could potentially be a good growth you know, way to grow or share things. I just don't know exactly how we would use it right now. Maybe once we get more organized about some stuff.
Okay, when you guys are talking about the Singularity videos, you're talking about the ones on the YouTube channel or are you referring to a different collection?
That's what I mean, pretty much, yeah, just the YouTube presence that, you know, SingularityNet puts the videos out there and then we have the Ambassador Program here and the Community Podcast and different things we're working on.
Okay, thank you.
I also think it won't be that long before yeah, with, for example, Sophia first, there's just, yeah, quite a bit of metaverse focus in there. Jam Galaxy also has quite a, yeah, overlaps quite a bit. There will be, here and there, there will be all kinds of metaverse interactions, so yeah. Alright, I think this is pretty much the final slide. Yeah, it's just a quick overview of the rewards that are about to be distributed. It's the, well, anybody can see the screen, I reckon. For the video for Dr. Matty Clay for CryptoAI News, then the video shorts which Tivo submitted three and also began the top three scoring videos in that challenge, so double the tokens there and then, yeah, something I did want to touch on for the meeting notes, because I think they're awesome. At the same time, with four, five meetings a week times this amount of tokens, at some point we'll be giving like a quarter of the tokens away to making notes. Yeah, I was thinking like, hmm, not sure how yeah, how sustainable that is. So yeah, that's something to yeah, to consider, because, yeah.
What helps a lot, especially on the beginning, if you have a community and you want to somehow figure out, hey, you have a community and you have contributors, you have participants and you have hardcore friends. And the beginning task really helps a lot to, let's say, already share the work of a bunch of people, but some feel more committed over time, right? And then for example, what makes much more sense to say, hey, you have something like a maintainer role. And this maintainer role is specifically as, for example, we waited for overall tasks which they take. Because you will see maybe over the time, wow, they pick a bunch of tasks. But then it makes more sense to say, oh, okay. The task doesn't make sense anymore for this role then, or for the growth of the project house we're establishing. Then you replace the task much more as roles. But first we have to figure out those roles and figure those out, you divide the tasks then, because then you can identify, like, ah, okay. This task, all the time created and taken and whatnot. But just say for a long time, really see that task specifically to people is really difficult to budget them. When you have them really all the time and then you run into issues like you said, and you spent a bunch of resources to only those tasks, but it doesn't really make sense anymore in this context.
No, for me.
Can someone post the link to the upcoming schedules for this?
Minute calendar, it's really important. One place to find everything to.
Please, please.
I think that each Monday, Tuesday and Friday at 18 UTC, always at this Discord server.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Right.
Okay, thank you Felix.
These are the official ones and then you have a bunch of, I think, working sessions during the week again. I think this one today is the third one already, were you Peter?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you said Friday 18, but last week the podcast one was at 16, I'm not sure if we
Ah, yes, sorry, my mistake.
Did wish that, well, actually I'm not sure about this week, whether it will be 18 or 16 UTC.
No, no, it was just my mistake.
Are we doing 16 Architect this Friday?
Just to get full clarity.
Yes, last time was at 16, wait, I mixed it up with my own time, it's 16, yeah, 16 UTC, I guess it was last time, wasn't that correct? And I guess we said that we should try that recurrently? Or did I misinterpret all other wishes?
No, that's perfect. Just making sure, so yeah. Then the, yeah, current schedule would be Tuesdays the town hall and then on Friday the Community Podcast meeting and then on Monday the Ambassador Program incubation structure, structuring, figuring out stuff, work group. Which needs a shorter name, but yeah, work in progress. Let's see, yeah, then to sum up so far for the translations, they have not been none of them have been verified, so I figured instead of doing like once a month payment, I'll check in two weeks to make sure that, yeah. People are not waiting for ages and ages. Yep, that's it.
So how many Miro boards has Tivo created already?
Two. Tomorrow is gonna be a third one.
But they're huge, so I'm not sure if it counts as just a
Actually, a really good indicator where you can see how a community grow, just check Tivo, my Tivo's Myra board. Fucking inception and evolution of a community. But it's true, huh?
Yeah, I also like to sometimes reflect back to the project part of Myra and then I see hundreds of like archives and long, because I also see like, they go further back the longer I touch them, so I notice some titles of, oh, that they did last year and seems it has grown into this now, what is the latest.
Tivo's boards and the graphs of Victor, they're indispensable.
Yeah, I like it a lot so far. Let's see, this is pretty much, yeah, what I wanted to cover. Still a bit of room for any questions, ideas or thoughts anybody might have.
No, just a little feedback, I really love the graphics you've been creating.
Thank you, I wish I could claim it as my own work, which is not true. You mean the, from the slides?
Yeah, I'm looking at the Ambassador Program, purple and I guess that's called red, but it's really nice and very eye-pleasing.
I'll pass that compliment along, appreciate it. Alright, I think if nobody wants to add something for now, then that wraps it up. Then the next meeting will be, as we just mentioned, coming Friday at 16 UTC and Thursday on 14 UTC, there's gonna be working session on setting up the DWork. So thanks everybody for joining and I hope you have a nice remainder of the evening or afternoon, wherever you are.
Thank you for presenting.
You're very welcome, thanks for joining.
Thank you Peter.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, really lovely host.
Definitely.